I'd ask that you would please rise as Chaplain Bruce Norgard of Lake Region Medical Center leads us into our invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pray with me. Lord, as we are gathered here to conduct the business of governing the city of Fergus Falls, we thank you for all those who are here. We thank you for those who are serving in elected positions as well as those who are here providing services and support for our community as they do on a day-to-day basis. We ask that all deliberations and decisions be guided by your leading. We ask that you help them to accomplish their duties in the best manner possible for all people in this city. We thank you for any and all residents, businesspeople, those that serve us, our first responders, and media representatives that are here to provide input. We all ask that as they serve the city and support one another. We thank you for our city staff who've done the work of preparation for this meeting and as they accomplish the mandates of this body and the people of this city. We ask again for your guidance as the business of this city is accomplished this evening for the benefit of all involved. In your name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's 5:30, Monday, June 17, 2019, and I'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on City Administrator Andrew Brumseth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, good evening. There are a few things that we have to move around this evening. First of all, we're adding a resolution denying the final plat for Ridgeview Meadows due to the developer in that instance withdrawing the application. That'll be on the consent agenda this evening, and then also adding a resolution approving quote for public improvement 5325, which is the 2019 Seal Coat Project, which will be under bids. I have received from various city council members the request to remove items four, five, six, and seven from the consent agenda, so we will have those discussed separately. And then finally, I guess for our friends in the audience and in the back, let's move the fire department badge ceremony and other items under petitions up ahead of awards of bids this evening so we can be respectful of their time and the attention that that matter should be given.
Thank you, Andrew. Are there any questions, comments? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Thank you, Mr. Fish. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign that motion carries. So, then, moving to petitions and communications, that's what you said in that. We're gonna have the fire, we're have a privilege and the honor tonight of recognizing new firefighters to our squad, and I would call on our Chief, Chief Macau. Ryan Macau, would you please introduce the new members of your team?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, fire department members, family and friends, and citizens of Fergus Falls. We gather tonight for our traditional firefighter badge pinning ceremony. This event is a milestone for our great firefighters. Great firefighters are those who strive for excellence, commit to learning, are good stewards of public trust, and are proud to be a part of the Community Fire Department. I am confident that each one of our current members do this, and of those receiving their badge tonight are just as committed. The badge of our firefighters that they receive this evening is a symbol of the sacrifice our firefighters make to protect the lives and property of those we serve. It also symbolizes the brother and sisterhood of the fire service that we are here for one another as firefighters. Our firefighters receiving their badge have completed well over 200 hours of initial firefighter training, as well as attended regular department training, several public relations events, and many hours at the fire station going through the trucks and equipment on their own time. They do all this while working full-time employment, as well as being a son, brother, a friend, a spouse, a dad, a coach, and the list can go on. So to this, on behalf of Assistant Chief Neville, Deputy Chief Anderson, Training Officer Abear, and myself, we thank you, the firefighters, and your family and friends, for your dedication to our department, and congratulate you on receiving your badge this evening. At this point, I will call on our members of the department who are receiving their badge, and if Mayor, you would come down. And then those who are pinning the badge on your firefighter, you're welcome to gather right up in front of me in preparation for pinning the badge. So with that, I'll introduce, and one member is not able to be here, the firefighter Todd Birkley, who rejoined our force after a leave of absence for some time, and he has actually come back and is back to driving, or one of the drivers of our ladder company. So huge congratulations for Todd for being a very committed member to our fire department who wasn't able to be here tonight. But from there, we have firefighter Corey Frye, firefighter Jonah Hove, firefighter Ryan Johnson, who also is rejoining our force after being gone for several years, firefighter Sam Nelson, firefighter Tanner Statham, and then our peer counselor Jim Salantini.
I, Ryan Johnson, who promise to serve and protect.
All citizens and guests of Fergus Falls.
All citizens and guests of Fergus Falls.
As well as my fellow fighters with pride, honor, integrity.
As well as my fellow fighters with pride, honor, integrity. Commitment and teamwork.
I promise that I will at all times conduct myself in a manner.
I promise that I will at all times conduct myself in a manner.
That reflects positively on the fire department and the city of Fergus Falls.
That reflects positively on the fire department and the city of Fergus Falls.
Lastly, I promise to follow the police policies set forth by the department and city.
Lastly, I promise to follow the policies set forth by the department and city.
uphold the laws and constitution of our state and nation.
Uphold the laws and constitution of our state and nation.
the city safe.
Thank you all.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duty as a firefighter to the best of my
Yeah, thank you, chief. And with that, I would like to call on Deputy Chief Dean Anderson.
ability to serve and protect.
And I will faithfully discharge my duty as a firefighter to the best of my ability
He's going to present the recognition of Seth Erickson's community service to the Fergus
to serve and protect.
Congratulations.
Falls Fire Department.
So if those who are gonna pin the badge on, if you're not up here, please come on
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, Dean.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Council members, I would like to ask Seth Erickson to come forward, please.
up.
That's good right there.
Whoever may be pinning the badge on your firefighter, don't be shy, anybody. Come on. Come on. See, this is a true test to see if they end up at the right badge. I'll let you know tomorrow, Andrew.
Uniforms are dark.
As most of you know, in our world that we live in today, it's a digital age, and Seth
Do you want me to? Do you want me to go up there with your phone? Yeah.
If you wanna go up higher, too.
has been very instrumental in helping us move forward at the Fergus Falls Fire Department
Congratulations.
with all of that information.
Congratulations.
At the Fergus Falls Fire Department, we have an app on our phones that is called Active
All right. Thank you all, and that's your newest members of the Fergus Falls Fire Department.
911, and what that does is it provides information and mapping to us for any call, for the most part. And what Seth has done is he's gone out on his own, on his own time, used his own resources to gather information for the Fergus Falls Fire Department as far as hydrant location. He's done fire department connection locations. He's even gone onto the interstate and done turnaround areas. So if we get a call when that map pops up, that information will show up on that location. Not only has Seth done this for the Fergus Falls Fire Department, but he's done it for, I think, almost all fire departments in Ottertail County as well, and he's done work for some of the emergency management team and for some of the EMS personnel as well. So it's not just specific to the fire service. He has provided a lot of great information, not only to the Fergus Falls Fire Department, but to all of Ottertail County. With that thought in mind, the Fergus Falls Fire Department wanted to recognize Seth, and we have a plaque here. And what it says is, "In recognition and appreciation for your selfless work and dedication to emergency preparedness and improving response communications for emergency responders throughout Ottertail County, presented to Seth Erickson, June 17, 2019." We want to thank you, Seth. Seth has offered all of this on his own, so we really do appreciate everything that he has done to help us move along in this digital age. If anyone out there in the community is willing to help in any way like this, we are more than willing to receive any kind of help like that. So thank you so much, very much, Seth. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, fire department. Thank you, Seth. Thank you. All right. The third item under petitions and communications is proclamation recognizing the 100th anniversary of the great cyclone of Fergus Falls. So whereas, be it recognized that on June 22, 1919, the city of Fergus Falls experienced a calamitous natural disaster when two tornadoes slammed into the community, destroying or damaging fully two-thirds of the city and leaving more than 55 people dead and hundreds injured. And whereas, in the wake of this disaster, the community persevered, came together under the slogan of "A bigger and better Fergus Falls," they rebuilt and prospered. Now therefore, I, Ben Shire, Mayor of Fergus Falls, do hereby proclaim that the week of June 17 through the 22nd be recognized as the 100th anniversary of the great cyclone of Fergus Falls. All right. Back to awarding of bids. Item number one is a resolution awarding the bid for public improvement 5290, the Lincoln Avenue Street Improvement Project, and I will call on our city engineer, Brian Uvaro. Good evening, Brian.
Thank you, Your Honor, and good evening, members. I presented this last giving of this council an update in regards to public improvement 5290. This is the Lincoln Avenue resurfacing project from Broadway to I-94 interchange. This is a state transportation improvement program. We received the bids. Indicated Essential Specialties out of Alexandria, Minnesota submitted a bid in an amount of The cost estimate for this project was approximately $1.49 million. Therefore, with consideration of this construction contract and the engineering overhead, I'm estimating this total project cost of $1,427,400. Right now, currently, as indicated, we're still, because it's a federal aid project, we're waiting for all the approvals from the state, particularly the Office of Civil Rights. I was hoping that we'd have this approval. It generally takes about two weeks, if not longer, but we have not received this. But at this time, I'm requesting the council award a construction services contract to Central Specialties contingent on final state approval to complete the process.
Thank you, Brian. Is there any questions? If not, would someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Krista.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number two is a resolution approving the quote for public improvement 5325, which is the 2019 Seal Coat Project.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, last Friday, quotes were due for this project. We received a total of one quote from Asphalt Technologies Corporation. However, their prices were very favorable. They submitted a low bid amount of $79,252.80. The estimated cost for the same work was $104,600. Based on the variability that we've seen and encountered on previous projects, we did build, bid it with two alternates, increasing the overall quantities, and with those alternates, too, we based those as favorable. So the total combined contract is estimated at $101,786.65. We, I therefore estimate, with engineering staff time and some contingencies and street sweeping by Public Works, a total project cost of $125,520. As indicated in the card before you, we levied about $108,000 to complete this work. The remaining balance of $17,520, requesting that we'll fund it through general MSA maintenance funds. So at this time, I'm just requesting awarding the, this work to Aztec Corp, base bid alternate one and two, in an amount of $101,786.65.
Thank you, Brian. Is there someone who'd like to offer a resolution accepting that? Thank you, Jim.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Caroline, any questions for Brian? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Resolution is approved. Under the consent agenda, as Andrew mentioned, items four, five, six, and seven have been requested to be removed, and so that leaves the remaining items for consideration under the consent agenda, and there's a copy in your packet and also on the board. If anyone would like any of the further items removed for discussion? If not, I would entertain a resolution approving items one, two, three, and eight. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, and there's the new one that we added, withdrawing the, or denying the final plat for Ridgeview Meadows. Does someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you.
I'll second, Your Honor.
Thanks, Justin. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number four is a resolution approving a conditional use permit for a day nursery in a B6 subregional shopping center district located at 2300 College Way, as requested by the independent school district 544. And I believe, Anthony, did you ask to speak to this?
Yeah, I asked to remove that, Your Honor, just for a point of clarification. I was just curious, it says that there are two entrance exits to allow traffic flow in and out, and I kind of wondered where the second entrance was, other than, is it the, because the line is kind of here, but I didn't know there was two entrances and exits to the target building. And is there a proposal for a second entrance to be added?
Ryan, would you like to address that?
Could I ask a question to clarify? You're talking entrances and exits to the building, or the road?
It says two entrances, exits to allow traffic flow in and out of Lincoln Crossing Businesses. Traffic flows along Kennedy Park into the site.
So you're talking about the road?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, Councilmember Hicks, I can clarify that. There's one access road into the site, and that is Kennedy Park Boulevard coming off of College Way. There are two additional kind of ways you can get out of the former Target parking lot into the Lincoln Way Crossing Business District. There are kind of two little access points into that business strip, but there's one access, primary access road into the site off of College Way.
So the principal traffic will be using, obviously, you know, going past the strip mall and into the old Target car parking lot?
Correct. If there's anybody that goes and buys a coffee afterwards, they might use one of those two access points into the strip mall, but primary access point would be off of the College Way from, via Kennedy Park.
And there's no, there's no plans to build another entrance at the rear or anything like that?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thank you, that's, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you, Ryan.
Someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll make that, offer that resolution.
Thank you, Anthony. One second. Thank you, Krista. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number five is a motion directed at the city attorney to amend the zoning ordinance to rezone 34.39 acres from an R8 to B3 to allow for the development of an elderly tenant multiple housing located at 1639 Cottage Drive as requested by Good Neighbor Properties. And I believe Scott just wanted to get some recognition of this project, is that correct?
Yep. And to speak in favor of it, and if you'd prefer, I'd make the motion to pass all three of these items, five, six, and seven, and as they would have typically gone under the consent agenda anyway. If you want to break them up, that's fine, but if we can do them as one...
I think we can do them as one resolution.
Okay. Then to that end, the points, I guess, I wanted to make were that, again, I'm in favor of this, and I think it's a good thing. I just wanted to make some things clear as to just what's involved with this project. People might hear that it's something happening up at the RTC and wonder if it's what's been talked about over time, or if it's something new. And this is essentially something new because it involves what everybody knows as the Nurses' Cottage. It's not within the Circle Drive, it's not a part of the Horseshoe, it's not a part of any of the buildings within the Circle Drive or near the Horseshoe. This is the separate Nurses' Cottage Building that sort of looks like a chalet that's off to the west of the Circle Drive. It's a privately owned building, and it has been privately owned for quite a few years. The Schlossmans have had this, and they've now made a deal with this Good Neighbor Properties to develop it, which I think is a terrific deal. Another point of clarification is that this group, Good Neighbor Properties, is not the same group that has been in conversations to develop the east and west wings of the RTC. It's a totally separate deal, totally separate people, totally separate organization, even though it's senior housing, and it sounds like it's kind of the same thing. It's not the same thing. It's even similar in numbers, 40 units versus 40 units, kind of similar that way. So it could easily be confused, but it's not the same thing. This is also being described as a senior assisted living facility, not, it's not apartments or condos like some of the other things that have been described. So that's another difference to it. It will be using historic tax credits, and the work that'll be done to restore and upgrade the building will not adversely affect any use of historic tax credits going forward on the other proposals that may come forward for the RTC, so that's a good thing. And overall, I think this is just a real positive step in the development of the RTC campus. It's a great thing for the neighborhood, you might say, and a great thing for Fergus Falls. And I'd like to express thanks to Jeff Schlossman, Schlossman Group, Good Neighbor Properties, for their expression of confidence in Fergus Falls and for their investments in this project.
Thanks, Scott. And with that, you offer that resolution?
I'll offer that motion to pass those three.
Five, six, and seven.
Just make one clarification here. You're authorizing me to draft a proposed ordinance, and that's how we rezone, is passing another, an ordinance to rezone. So that will be presented to you at the next council meeting for a first reading, and then it will be, if you want to have it continue, to go on to the next council meeting for a second reading, after which it will become adopted. So there's, that's the process. We do rezoning through ordinances and not necessarily through resolutions, so that's how I interpret this, and that's what I'll do.
There's always another step in the process.
Unfortunately, there is.
That's all right.
Thanks, all. So we have a resolution on the floor. Is there someone who'd like to second that resolution?
I'd like to second.
Any further questions?
Yeah, Your Honor, I had a question. I just wanted to understand a little bit about what does elderly tenant multiple housing facility? And I appreciate, obviously, Scott's comments, but I wonder if somebody can define what is elderly tenant multiple housing? Is it assisted living, or what exactly is it?
Ryan, would you like to?
Yeah, I just want to know what they're proposing to actually build.
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilmember Hicks, out of our code, under definitions, there are two items here that will help clarify that. One is elderly tenant, and by our code, the definition of elderly tenant is an individual who is at least 62 years of age or handicapped, including the family member of an individual who is an elderly tenant, and the surviving female member of an individual who was an elderly tenant. So that's the definition of elderly tenant. And then a elderly tenant multiple housing project is an apartment building designed or occupied entirely by 100% of elderly tenants. That's out of our code.
So the population's gonna be 60, 60-plus-year-olds?
62-plus or handicapped.
Right. And handicap can be any age?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. All right. Next item, we have some kids out there, some people in purple t-shirts that are excited for this next item on the agenda, so I'll call on Bill Sonmore to get it kicked off, but it's a resolution approving a $25,000 forgivable loan to Otterco Children's Museum from the city and the Community Development Fund, HUD Fund 264. Thank you, Bill.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, Otterco came before Business Development for Fergus Falls. They are the new loan review board that took place of the EIC and Business Development of Fergus Falls. So that group received a presentation from Tasha Rolfs. She also gave you, the city council, a presentation here a couple meetings back. So their request was for $50,000, and the recommendation coming out of Business Development for Fergus Falls would be $25,000 was gonna come from the loan funds that are under the control of Business Development for Fergus Falls. So that's their decision. That's the money that was the old EIC loan fund. So they've decided to do a $25,000 forgivable loan over five years, 0% interest for that portion of it. The other portion, then splitting, that other $25,000 recommended to come out of our Fund 264, that's the CDBG HUD funds, and that then comes before you as a city council with those same terms of five-year, they stay in business for five years, 0% interest, it would be forgivable, 1/5 each year. So I place that before you.
Thank you, Bill. It sounds like there's someone over here that wants to say a few words. But before he does, is there some, we could do this by resolution, so if someone would offer that resolution?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
I'll let Justin have it.
Justin, thank you. Tasha, did you want to say a few words?
Yeah. I'll bring my baby on. Thank you so much, Mayor, and the city council, and the staff, and the city of Fergus Falls, and thank you also to, microphone. Thank you also to the amazing Otterco ambassadors and Otterco board members that sit behind me, and all of the children that are so heavily invested in this project. And so we are so excited to tell you that since we last spoke to you about two months ago, we have had some incredible investors step forward, and we are sitting in a really wonderful spot. And the building has been purchased by our landlord, it is now ours, and literally demo started this morning at 9:00 a.m., and that is why I'm out of a babysitter, is because my husband and father-in-law are over there demoing right now. And so there is just so much excitement going on. We really thank you for your support. This is going to be an educational hub, an artistic hub, and a physical hub for the children of Fergus Falls. And we are so excited to make sure that this city is a place that people want to visit and stay and live, and we appreciate your support.
Thanks, Tasha. Maybe I should have called for the vote before I had to. I'm crossing my fingers, so I'll roll call.
Your Honor. I just want to...
off. But it's a resolution approving a $25,000 forgivable loan to Otter Cove Children's Museum from the city and the Community Development Fund, HUD Fund 264. Thank you, Bill.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, Otter Cove came before Business Development for Fergus Falls. They are the new loan review board that took place of the EIC and Business Development of Fergus Falls. So that group received a presentation from Tasha Rolfs. She also gave you, the city council, a presentation here a couple of meetings back. So their request was for $50,000, and the recommendation coming out of Business Development for Fergus Falls would be $25,000 was going to come from the loan funds that are under the control of Business Development for Fergus Falls. So that's their decision. That's the money that was the old EIC loan fund. So they've decided to do a $25,000 forgivable loan over five years, 0% interest for that portion of it. The other portion, then splitting, that other $25,000 recommended to come out of our Fund 264. That's the CDBG HUD funds. And that then comes before you as a city council with those same terms of five-year, they stay in business for five years, 0% interest. It would be forgivable, 1/5 each year. So I place that before you.
Thank you, Bill. It sounds like there's someone over here that wants to say a few words. But before he does, is there some, we could do this by resolution. So if someone would offer that resolution?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
I'll let Justin have it.
Justin, thank you. Tasha, did you want to say a few words?
Yeah. I'll bring my baby on her. Thank you so much, Mayor, and the city council, and the staff of the City of Fergus Falls. And thank you also to, microphone. Thank you also to the amazing Otter Cove ambassadors and Otter Cove board members that sit behind me, and all of the children that are so heavily invested in this project. And so we are so excited to tell you that since we last spoke to you about two months ago, we have had some incredible investors step forward, and we are sitting in a really wonderful spot. And the building has been purchased by our landlord. It is now ours. And literally demo started this morning at 9:00 a.m., and that is why I'm out of a babysitter, is because my husband and father-in-law are over there demoing right now. And so there is just so much excitement going on. We really thank you for your support. This is going to be an educational hub, an artistic hub, and a physical hub for the children of Fergus Falls. And we are so excited to make sure that this city is a place that people want to visit and stay and live, and we appreciate your support.
Thanks, Tasha. Maybe I should have called for the vote before I had to. I'm crossing my fingers, so I'll roll.
Your Honor.
Do you like this talk?
Sorry. I just want a couple of points of clarification. I don't want to be Mr. Grinch, but I'll probably come over that way. But the, it's, it's an interest-free forgivable loan, so that means that we're going to write off each year $10,000?
In total between the two.
In total between the two.
Yeah. Again, $25,000 is the city's portion of that, and $25,000 is the funds under BDFF, so.
So.
Yeah.
And I mean, and I just wonder if we could get an update as to where you're actually at in the total fundraising?
So we have, it's hard at this point to distinguish pledges from donations. You know, we are, people are knowing that we are doing this on a really fierce timeline, unlike other initiatives. And so we are trying not to take too many pledges, but rather donations. And so if you were to look at pledges and donations, I believe right now we're at about $250,000.
And that's, and your goal is 400?
Our goal is 400.
And, and again, what happens if we don't make 400?
Yeah, so we have, that's not even including all the grants and trusts that we have verbal agreement from, and it'll be worse. If you want to hear him scream. No, we are applying for the Otto Bremmer Trust, and the Dell Trust, and Lake Region Healthcare Foundation. And there's a number of trusts and grants that are not even in the, in the, the numbers right now that would push us well over and give us a nice, a nice cushion into our operating, operating expenses, and then help us save to when we move into the top floor, when the Freemasons are out of the building. So anything, you know, that'll just...
And then what about ongoing fundraising in the sense of how, you know, operationally? I mean, the reason I'm asking is 50,000 is a lot of money collectively from the city to, to give, in the sense that we're not, I mean, it's a donation. It's not a, it's not really a loan if it's forgivable. And so, just so that we do our due diligence, that, you know, we're not putting some money into something that, you know, may not be there in, in five years.
Yeah, definitely. So we are working really closely with a children's museum consultant and a set designer, and they are from Earhart and Elizabeth, respectively. They have traveled the country, setting up and creating and establishing children's museums in, in communities very similar sizes as ours, and communities larger than ours. And they are working on a master plan. And that is, the intention of the master plan is to make sure that we are set up for success. And he is outlining the, you know, we already have our, you know, bare bones business plan, how we could make it work. But he has laid it out how, how the, you know, how, how he's done it in other communities. And right, he has, he started up the Mankato Children's Museum, which is, have been awarded regional and national awards, and is one of the best, most well-attended children's museums in the, in the country. And so it's, we do believe that we're in very good hands in that regard, and that we have received a lot of donors who are, are excited to give annually. And that's part of, some of their commitments is that if you have certain, certain exhibits inside the museum, that you are giving annually as well. And we already have about 50% of the annual giving that we're looking at from those partnerships set up, and that's without even door knocking and letter writing. And so, and with fundraising events, and with the possibility that children's museums are given quite a bit of funding from the state as well, that we can apply for, for exhibits and programming alone, and not towards operation costs. But it's exciting to know that what we'd be taking in, we don't have to put towards operation or exhibits and programming, that we'll likely be able to get some of that funding from the state of Minnesota. The children's museums qualify for that, so.
Can I add one thing to that? One thing I learned this morning that I was surprised to learn was that children's museums are at the top of the museum world as far as earned income, or the money they bring in from just actually tickets. And, and I think it was said that one of the museums that he was working with, they're able to, they're one of the few museums that is actually able to do, would be able to do a bare bones operation strictly under ticket sales, even if there were no support from, is that accurate?
Children's museums are the most well-attended museum of, in the museum world. And the, the hands that we're in, and the exhibits they're designing, and the, the support we're receiving in the community, the research we've done proves that this is going to be able to sustain itself, even in, you know, if we just, if we're meeting the basics of our attendance goals.
Yeah. I mean, my concern is just the amount of money that we're giving. So.
Also, Mr. Hicks, I know, I know one of the, one of the backers of, of the museum quite well, and he will make it go.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim, any other questions from the council?
Just based on the, the amount of money that we're giving to initiative like this, it's, it is going to be really exciting. And to see the amount of families that stay on weekends versus travel elsewhere, and the impact that that staying and playing and shopping and eating is going to have on our sales tax, and not even counting the amount of traffic that we'd be bringing in from the outside, as we are the only children's museum with indoor play structure within a 90-mile radius. And so I do think that we're going to see it reap benefits beyond what this 50 grand even looks like at this moment. That the type of traffic that we're bringing in and helping to keep here would, would help make up that difference.
And then one other thing I would add is that in 2006, the council used the same fund to make a donation, or a forgivable loan to the Catas Galleries. And it was a much smaller percentage of the overall budget. So I think the similarity, we can all agree, I think, the benefit to the downtown area that the Catas has. So I'm strongly in support. But Scott, would you like?
Maybe one thing that would help soften the blow a bit would be if we knew how the city would be recognized in, in, for this commitment. Typically, with any museum, there's a donor wall. There's some kind of recognition.
Yes.
And I'm sure there's a plan for that, if you could describe that.
Sure. So there is a donor wall. And we, we're wanting to commission local artists to help create that donor wall. We strongly aren't in, in support of the plaques. And, you know, children can't appreciate that or read that. This museum is for children. And so how can we have an interactive, beautiful donor wall that looks more like a landscape? And so where there are, you know, the smaller donors are leaves on the trees, and the medium donors are butterflies and dragonflies, and the $50,000 donors are otters. And it is an otter in the river. And it says, "City of Fergus Falls, service food." You know, "Lake Region Healthcare are the otters in the river." And that would be a start to that. And if there is an, you know, an opportunity to name an exhibit after the city, we would be, we would love to collaborate with you and talk with you about that opportunity as well.
Thank you, Tasha. Any other, Bill?
Just going to point out one more thing.
Thanks, Bill.
Join you at the podium here. Just to clarify, and I should have brought this up earlier, too. Cities, you know, can only provide money if we have statutory authority to do so. So not any organization can come to the City of Fergus Falls and ask for funds. So I kind of want to preface that to any other organizations watching. We cannot just do this to any organization. You mentioned the Catas a few years back. We were able to do that because under Minnesota statute, cities can support arts organizations such as that. This, being a youth center, we have statutory authority under 471.935, and the city attorney and I, we did review that, that we do have statutory authority to do that as well. So just, it's relevant to always remember the way we spend our money. We can only do it according to statute, and this happens to be one of the areas that we can. But if it was another type of organization, I probably would be standing up here saying no, because we don't have the statutory authority. So this is...
With that, a question for Bill, then. My, my concern is that we're kind of taking
$25,000 out of that EIC loan fund, which is our most flexible fund within Business Development for Fergus Falls.
Yeah.
I mean, can we take 50,000 out of the other fund? I, I, I'm just reluctant to kind of lose 25,000 of our most flexible fund, when it, when it doesn't have a lot of money in it already.
Yeah. Well, and it's, the loan fund has 300-plus thousand in the, the old EIC loan fund. So certainly, the city has authority. If you were to choose as council to take the 50,000 out of the Fund 264, CDBG HUD, you have the legal authority to do that. And then you would want to work with Business Development for Fergus Falls and see, would they want to change their mind? They have already approved that previous 25,000. So that's under your consideration, so.
So if I understand correctly, you guys already approved the first 25, which is the flexible one, right?
Yeah, I wasn't there, but.
You're only one vote.
Yeah. I mean, I, I mean, I just don't, I mean, I just don't want to lose it out of that particular fund. So, I mean.
But just to be clear, that's not this one, right?
It's, it's the...
It's not this 264. That's, that's...
No, it's the 917.
This is our revolving loan.
The 917.
This Fund 264 is a revolving loan fund of the city. It's one of the funds that, you know, we're authorized to make such an expenditure out of this. And we are structuring it as a forgivable loan.
I'm basically suggesting that we take it all out of 264 versus take it out, half out of 917 and 264.
Your Honor, members, that's really not our decision to make, Councilmember Hicks, because we have no authority over the EIC loan fund. So we could ask Business Development for Fergus Falls if they were willing to cancel that gift and allow us to give it all under this, this pot of money, this program that we do have authority over. But I don't think we're in a position this evening to dictate that without an additional action of that other board. Because we, we have absolutely no authority or say in where those funds go or how those funds are used, related to the EIC loan program that we keep referencing that was already approved for 25,000. Well, if that's the way we want to move, I think that's fine. But we should approve that contingent on BDFF reconsidering and allowing us to take, take it out of that fund rather than the other.
Or you could pass the resolution, and you could always pass another resolution coming back, funding it more.
Right. That's true, too. You could approve the 25,000 tonight, and then deal with those others, and come back and do it again, if you like.
Any other questions, comments?
We have a, we have a resolution on the floor that's to fund it out of two loans.
No, it's just...
Oh.
It's just, tonight is just 264.
Just...
So the Business Development's already proved their 25? So I guess what they're saying is if, if the next time they meet, if they'd like to say, hey, we want to take it all out, then we'll come back at another 25, and they can take their loan. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. So tonight, it's the 25,000 for 264.
I just got a point of clarification. So to me, if I was on that other board, I'd want to know that the city was, to your point, and that we were okay with taking the full 50 out of the one fund for them to, you know, go back on their commitment. So I'd like to see if we would approve it for the 50 contingent on them. Because I feel like if we approve it at 25, and they go back and they say, yeah, well, you know, have the other 25 come out of ours, I want to make sure that that commitment goes through with the council.
I have a feeling these guys are just going to take the 75 and run.
Whatever's the easiest, but I feel like, I hear Anthony's point about, you know, we have the ability to take out the one fund and give BDFF more, more flexibility on their 300.
If we pass it tonight, I think if the intention is for the city to donate 50,000, so if we pass this 25 tonight, if the Business Development for Fergus Falls decides that they would rather have it come out of this fund, I think we could take that other 25 off at the next meeting. Does that sound good?
Right.
Fair enough. Sounds good.
Roll call.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Item number two is a resolution providing for the competitive negotiated sale of $3,320,000 in general obligation bonds. And I will call on Doug Green, formerly of Springstead, but you changed your name on us, Doug.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Bill, would you like to start?
You go for it.
Okay.
I'll chime in where needed.
All right, great. Again, Doug Green with Baker Tilly. I sometimes get, formerly of Springstead for 60 years, and we just merged with Baker Tilly just in April this year. So I still answer my phone, Springstead, but it'll take a year, probably. So what you have in front of you is an authorizing resolution. All it does is, it authorizes the city to move forward with the general obligation bonds for the neighborhood project that was discussed earlier, and other improvements to the water system. It sets the time and date of the sale for probably for July 15th. I don't know the exact time, 10:00 a.m. It doesn't, if something happens between now and then, for whatever reason, the city's not obligated to go through with the bond sale. It just authorizes this staff and us to move forward. And if you do decide to move, authorize this bond sale, what we'll do in the next few weeks is finalize this official statement, which is pretty much done. This is the offering document to prospective bondholders. We've already gone through the credit rating call with Moody's, and so we're expecting that back this week. So we will review that and get that published for, again, prospective underwriters and bondholders to review. And I'm sure they'll look at them favorably. And I guess the only other thing I would mention is, you know, we're, is probably know we're entering the market at a very good time. Interest rates are incredibly low. Over the past two months, they've fallen because of, you know, the trade concerns and fear of economic slowdown, but just a myriad of things that resulted in very low interest rates. I think we are in your packet. You have estimated debt service schedules, amortization schedules, whatever you want to call them. Right, at this point, there's probably a little padding in there. We're looking at a true interest rate, which is the interest rate that we award the bonds on of 2.57%, 2.6%. Obviously, the market moves every day. So when we come back on July 15th, it, you know, it'll be something different. But the market doesn't move. This particular municipal market doesn't move that much. It's reborn. It's a little bit up, a little bit down. But it'll be in the ballpark. Something crazy happens, and interest rates shoot up, and we think they might come down over the next few weeks, we'd be in a position to delay the sale. But that rarely ever happens, so.
Thank you, Doug.
I can add just a couple of things?
Please do, Bill.
Just going to talk a little bit about the projects that we're financing for you. So certainly, the Mount Faith area over by the school, we're just starting construction of that. We went through that whole assessment hearing, went through that process. Now, we assessed ourself as a city for part of that. We're, we're going to pay our assessments upfront, so we're not bonding for those costs. And then the school is probably going to pay their assessments upfront as well, instead of making payments over 15 years. So we're not bonding for those two portions. That cash is going right to the project. You're not going to bond for money that you have cash in hand. So, so we're going to bond for the, the street improvements. That's about a million-dollar project, so we're going to bond for $915,000 for that section. Then the water portion of that, $960,000 of bonds. So we have improvements. So the water lines in that area are $934,000. Going to bond for all of those. And then we're also looking at that water reservoir up at the plant. We have two reservoirs up there. Number one is going to have to be decommissioned at some point here. So we're getting number two fixed up, basically, before we decommission the other one. So that one's all done. That's about $700,000 is what we're bonding for that. That's that portion of that. Decided to put that into here, so we don't come back and bond later this year for that. Good to get it done at one time. And then the stormwater portion, need funds of about $704,000. So that's the bonding portion of 725 with issue costs. Rolling all those together here for you tonight. Now, we have, you know, we look at that when we plan our utility rates. So I've been building these projects in, so it's something we've been expecting. So arriving here tonight, we've talked about those reservoirs a little bit. And then also, when we had those assessments hearing, we talked about how those PIR bond portion, that's how it comes to fruition here tonight, linking that together. So that's, any other questions on that, as far as the project?
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Doug. Any questions from the council? If not, is there a resolution providing for the competitive negotiated sale of those bonds?
May that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony.
One second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Tonight, there's claims in the amount of $1,589,220.67. And if there's any questions, we will direct them to our finance director. Off the resolution, thank you very much, Jim.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Justin? Justin? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. There are no board, committee, or department reports. Under reports from staff and administrative officers, we have an update on the community development director position, and I will call on Councilwoman Krista Hagberg to give that update.
Thank you, Mayor. After a lot of research and communication, the personnel committee, which includes the city administrator, Mike Hartwell, Caroline, and myself, the community director position, community development director, will be hired as a department-level position. We are looking at this position, obviously, being the executive director of the Port Authority, working very closely with Greater Fergus Falls, and they will also have a huge piece with recruitment, as well as being a main point of contact for a contracted agency providing cities' planning services. We feel this is a huge necessity, and if we find a suitable candidate, the city administrator will then bring that recommendation back to the council for final approval. With Caroline being on the personnel committee, as well as the Port Authority, she and I will both be sitting in on interviews for those candidates. So, that's where we're at right now, it has been posted as a department head-level position.
Thank you. And the other piece of that, that I heard you say in there, was the possibility of looking at contracting for the planning services?
Yeah.
Rather than having a permanent position, is that?
Well, I'll let Andrew kind of speak to that, so.
Sure, yeah, I will. Thank you, Your Honor, members, just to the original point there, the position is posted, and it closes not this Friday, but the following, so we have gotten a little bit of traction already, so that's good. But please continue to share, spread the word, we'd like to have a good depth of candidate pool there to look at and choose from. She did mention the contracted city planning services. I've talked to two different firms that provide planning, city planning services for several communities, and I'm expecting this week to get a proposal from at least one of them related to what they could provide in terms of number of hours and cost. The idea behind contracting these services is simply that recruitment of city planner positions has been very challenging. There's several other cities, including Sartell and Becker that we've talked to, that have gone through a recruitment process and have been unable to have any, to get any candidates. When we posted our position, we had one candidate the first time. And so, a lot of cities are starting to move in the direction of having contracted services, share one person between multiple cities to do these duties, and spread that work out. I will say that we can likely get as much coverage and/or service doing this as we would have with somebody being on staff full-time, and all the distractions and everything else that comes along with that, for significant cost savings. I don't know what that number is tonight, like I said, the proposals will be forthcoming here in the next couple of days, but certainly something that will bring back to the city council for their thoughts and action. But I'm excited about the direction that we're going with this, because we can realize some level of cost savings, but also provide a high level of service. And the community of our size is probably on the leading edge of moving in this direction, and I think a lot of other communities like ours are going to start moving in that direction, as well as the pipeline has really gone dry, and there's very few candidates, and very few qualified individuals to recruit to communities like ours. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions about that. I wasn't prepared to say anything else, other than the update on the community development director, which Councilmember Hagberg did a great job with, but you'll have this at a future meeting, and I'll be glad to share more at that time, too.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you. Just any questions for either of them?
Good job.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, under Old and Unfinished Business, it is a resolution, I don't know what is the resolution, approving the City of Fergus Falls comments to be submitted to the FERC regarding the Otter Tail Power Hydro Licensing Process. Andrew, would you like to comment on that process?
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, members. After the last meeting, Councilmember Kwame, the mayor, myself, and Public Works Director Lynn Taylor got together to talk about how we wanted to maybe frame these comments, and there's a draft in your packet this evening related to what we came up with, and I think just quickly to sum up the position that we took in the letter, is that we welcome and encourage recreational opportunities in and along the Otter Tail River, as long as property owners and city infrastructure, other public infrastructure, aren't negatively impacted. And really, the breadth of the letter focused on the fact that the city is willing and able to partner with stakeholders to these ends, and we hope that creative solutions can be considered related to recreational opportunities along the river, while maintaining status quo for property owners and infrastructure. So, certainly, admittedly, not a strong position, but I think it's, we find ourselves in a precarious and unique situation related to this process, and this is the result of many conversations and a few weeks' worth of work, so if there's any comments, I think that would be appropriate, otherwise, if the council's comfortable, a resolution approving us to submit these comments to FERC would be in order.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? If not, do we have a resolution approving those comments?
I think that.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes. Hagberg. Yes.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. There is no new, there is no new business to consider this evening?
Your Honor, could I just add on the old businesses, to bring something forward on the Port Authority?
Certainly.
Just to give the council a heads-up, the Port Authority and the Level 4 school with Lake Country Co-op, that building purchase is looking to happen on the 28th of June, and we've got favorable bids on the renovation work, and obviously, the winner of that bid was Comstock locally, but we will be coming to the city council on July the 1st to authorize bonding for funding that project, so just to make people aware that that's coming down the pike.
Sure.
And for them to kind of look for it.
Thank you, Anthony, for that update. Any other updates coming before the council? There is no new business, and with that.
Your Honor, just on new business, can I add one thing? It was on the radio this morning that the state of Minnesota is going to increase water charges starting January 1. Is it possible for somebody to look into that and see what the impact is going to be to residents? It's going to like double their fee to $9 or something?
Yeah, certainly.
Thanks.
Any other miscellaneous announcements to come before the council?
I have nothing else.
All right, so the next city council meeting is the committee of the whole at the Police Department Community Room on June 26 at 7:00 a.m., and then the July 1 city council meeting will also be at the, I'm assuming they're having some work done here in the.
We're going to finally get around to the audio and video updates that you were asking for. We will be out of commission for a few days, but it'll be better than ever, we'll be back.
Wonderful. Okay. Anything else to come before the council? If not, we adjourn.